We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We'll start with the prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear Father, we thank you for this day and the freedom to meet. Give us wisdom on our decision making. Lord, help us recognize and enjoy all the blessings that you have placed in our lives. It is in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
You have the August 6 regular council meeting minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to approve those?
I make a motion to approve them.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
I'm staying.
Barth.
Yes.
Got the bills listed in your packet. Does anyone have any questions about any of the bills?
Yes, I do. I see we did some sewer work in Oak Park.
Yes.
I thought everything was done down there a couple years ago. And then I seen where it took two contractors to get it done.
This started out, it was behind Jim Seiler's house. And so this was sort of an in-between me, other guy. So I mean, I wasn't around for the beginning. And this has nothing to do with what he decided either. So he had hired Savage and Perna to come down and dig. Well, once they got in there, it turned out to be our 15 or 18-inch line behind there. So they were actually working on our line once they got down there.
It took two guys to dig it?
Well, he had hired them both. I mean, they had done the work before, assuming they were working for him. So we didn't hire them.
Him being Seiler?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I figured we owed the bill since they actually worked on our main, as it turns out, not his private property.
Okay. And first camera repair, $1,600.
I'm assuming that was reinstalling all the old cameras, I'm assuming, on the new building, all new Cat 5 cable. They took it down from the old, I'm just guessing, valve's not here. But I'm guessing that's what it was from. Because they're the ones that, of course, Fire Security was the company that installed all of the original cameras on the old brick building.
There was a couple times we had incidents down there where they said cameras were so fuzzy, we couldn't even...
Right.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I have one.
Go ahead.
He's not here to ask us. Police ammunition for almost $1,600. I'm just kind of curious what that was.
I was wondering about the police hardware, what that was. And then the police vehicle hardware. Do you happen to remember, Cheryl? It's all in initials, so I don't know what it stands for.
Well, your police leads.
Leads is the law enforcement automated, like, data system.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I just wanted to clarify.
On the front page under the arrow fence, the $475, we did get the reimbursement check for that today. I didn't go after them for the, because another truck was in there the very next day. I think somebody else had been in there since. It would've turned into a, we can't prove who did what.
Are we gonna hang a...
They're supposed to be getting me a quote for adding to that to get a bar across the top.
I suggested to Kent today that we get something kind of decorative that looks nice looking, and not just a chain link bar across there. But that's just my suggestion. I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
Up the park view at their $100 million cancer institute, it's just a 6-inch pipe. It's hanging from a chain that says, "Low clearance, X amount of feet." And about anywhere you go, that's what they've got. We really should do something rather quickly. I mean, a piece of 6-inch pipe, 12-foot 6-inch pipe, what, 30 bucks?
Well, you've got to put it on top of the existing post.
Are there any more questions for the bills?
I'll take a look at them.
A move to approve.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
Thank you.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
You have minutes in your packets for the CRA Housing Board. They've met for the first time. Does anybody have any questions about that? All right, you have minutes in your packet from the Nuisance Board meeting, August 6. Anybody have any questions about that?
Have you heard anything back?
From whom?
The owner.
I called and told them that they couldn't, that the property tax idea did not fly. Oh, yeah, I'd hear today that AEP's coming. What date did I tell? I don't know what day. I guess I told Mike Bailey. They're coming like this week, later this week. AEP is to get the trees cut down out of the wires and stuff so then that they can tear down the building. It's either this week or next week, I'm writing. You have in the packet the Park Board meeting minutes from August 15?
Okay, there's one thing I want to talk about. And it's the first paragraph about Field Number 7. And I don't know how up to speed people are on the, I don't know if it was adver-- not advertised, but discussed or not back in early May when this happened. Something to do with the tarp that the Boys Association put on there that ended up causing damage to the fence. I mean, people up to speed on any of that?
A little bit. I know stuff breaking into this, but I believe it was told they couldn't put it up. And they went to somebody else and got a yay for it, so they took the tarp off. Windstorm came in and pushed in the backstop, had bent the bars at the base of Field 7. During that, I think our guys had to go down, bub, and a couple of them get up there, take the, before it got damaged any further, and got that battered down right away. Well, in the meantime, I think our past administrator said, "It looks like it's safe enough. It doesn't need repaired." You know, we're not fence experts, or, you know, it's kind of bit there at the base. It is leaning. And we talked about maybe having the, what I remember from our Park Board minutes, we thought that maybe the Association could pay for the deductible. We got it repaired, right?
The cost of that.
Right, the cost would pay to get it repaired and pay the deductible.
I think they ought to pay the whole thing. Why should we take a hit? We didn't mess with the fence. But anyway, since you kind of got the broad idea, back when this happened, you know, Jim did get an estimate from Arrow for $8,500 to fix it. Well, then in-between times, I've got a whole stack of emails and pictures. He had submitted it to the insurance company. And then he canceled the claim. He had somebody, I guess, from the Ball Association go up and twisty tie it together. And he said, "Oh, yeah, that's great. No problem. We'll just leave it that way." So I guess I need to know, are we fixing it? And if we're fixing it, who's paying for it? I don't know if the insurance company will even do it as a claim at this point. I don't think we've got $8,500 laying around in the park budget to fix it.
What's the Park Board gonna do instead?
What are we gonna do?
What do you want done?
Well, ideally, we would want it fixed. We thought, I'm not sure what the deductible is, and none of us are clear on that. But we thought that had it been put through to insurance, the Ball Association has said that they would pay whatever the insurance did pay. And that would be, that was my understanding.
Right, absolutely.
So if we can go to the Ball Association and just say, "Look, this is what it costs to fix, what we did," that would be my suggestion. If the insurance thing does not pan out, we can't, seems to think it will not.
I don't know what they'll think. We don't have like any report, like, say if a truck would've hit it, you would add a PD report, and we could've explained what happened. Since this was a tarp, I guess, for lack of a better term, the third party put up on our property. But then they're also telling, "Well, no, that's okay, fine."
Well, coming out there, there have been a couple of phone calls that I've had with people telling them exactly who they need to contact before they do stuff at the park. And so what really needs to happen is some direct communication to everybody involved. Because they think that, you know, their coaches down there, they're helping down there so they can just kind of take care of things. But instead of going through the right channels to take care of it the right way, they do things like this because they think it will help, and then it ends up not helping. So I think the communication just needs to be clear, the lines of communication. And I know I've talked to at least three people about those lines of communication on different occasions, so...
So Kent, you're saying the insurance won't cover it now? I think we ought to turn in.
I don't know.
That's why we have insurance.
It doesn't hurt to ask them.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be fixed no matter what. I mean, you just weaken the structure and...
They don't have $8,500, and we, you know, the park doesn't.
Well, what if the insurance company doesn't? I guess that's what...
Why wouldn't they? It was wind damage. I mean, I think we should try.
Well, what if I went to your house, did something to your fence, and caused damage? Would your insurance company...
This is different.
How's it different?
No, it's not.
And they put those tarps up trying to get some extra shade for their spectators. And that piping's not rated for that wind load, having all those extra tarps catching all that extra wind. That's what bent everything. It wasn't done by the park or done by the village. It was done by coaches or spectators.
If the Ball Association paid for it, they would probably think a lot clearer the next time they wanted to strap something on there.
But $8,500, they probably don't have account money.
Is the park coming in their margin?
Well, I was gonna say.
I guess why should we take insurance?
Start with the insurance. Try it.
If not, then I guess... Well, okay.
They might not even question, you know, they might just...
Well, they might wonder why we're coming back now three months later, but...
They don't...
Yeah, it's gotta be the same guy that handled it in May. It's gotta say, "Well, your previous guy said, 'No, don't worry about it. It's fixed. All's well.'" I'm getting tired of some of those situations.
Sure.
There was just a large amount of miscommunication, and you'd like to see if you can rectify this whole thing.
Much as it irritates me. If it'll be an, well, it really does. I don't see why we're taking hit on our insurance. But if they'll do it as a claim, are we at least gonna have them pay our $1,000 deductible?
Yes, yes. That's what the Park Board were asking.
Then if it's not an insurance claim, we're just gonna be nice guys and fix it.
No, I think we need to get all, we need to get all the, the Association and the park and the village and...
Why don't we just go direct at them?
That's what we have insurance for. I mean, save all parties of insurance will pick it up. That's why we pay it.
Because I'm pretty sure the insurance company isn't hurting for money.
Now, it doesn't hurt to ask. This is gonna be our third or fourth claim just since I've been back. I'm getting tired of insurance claims.
What's the other claims you have?
It's a village. It's huge.
Yeah, but we've gone years with no claims at all.
We'll start paying for that.
As I say, eventually, all this stuff's gonna start catching up. So no, that's fine. I said my computer's down, but I'm having April at least check my emails down there. And I can try calling that a gesture since you didn't call me today. If they'll do it as a claim, that's fine. But if not, you know, then we're back to them. We'll go after them.
Anything else for the Park cap?
No, I just hope you guys don't come to my house and do something that my insurance company will pay for.
We're going on to council committees. Are there any committees of council that have any reports? No committees for council, council committees? Okay, we'll go on to the administrator's report.
Nothing at this point. There might be stuff later on to legislation.
Real quick, we did have a meeting with our cap here. Had sent a rep in for our asset management plan there with the water department. And I know Jessica's there, Ron came, I was there for a while, and Ken was not able to attend. But kind of doing a, over cap for what they're doing. They're currently out right now doing, working on the GIS and mapping. There's a couple gentlemen going through town and mapping all the different spots they need to. But then they have another meeting with this committee September 17 at 1 o'clock. So they are working on the asset management plan and GIS, so...
Okay, thanks. Solicitor's report.
Okay, we have a lot of different things here. We'll start out with Resolution 2018 dash 09 is a, as amended, is a third reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the sale of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit village personal property, including by internet auction for the calendar year 2018. That's what we had where Jim had requested to be able to sell a couple of things. And Kent wanted it to be more open-ended so that if other things came up, they could be sold. And then there's the language in there. They don't have to be sold by internet auction, but if they're gonna be, it approves that. And that's through the, we've done for several years now, we've got deals.
And is this the type of the thing that you learned at your conference? That you don't, that you don't have to...
Yeah, that's what the attorney said.
That you don't have to do anything special to sell equipment?
He said this should fall under just general government function that we get through the Constitution, but... But I was gonna ask Troy on that. I thought I had seen somewhere in there, so does that mean I have to use that GOV deal?
You don't have to. It says that you, oh, that's who we previously had designated as the internet. That's why I took that off the old ones that we had done before. You mean if you wanna...
Yeah, if I wanted to use somebody else.
Some other internet auction?
Yeah.
Yeah, then we should approve somebody else, if there's somebody else.
What if he sold it by private treaty?
He doesn't have to sell by internet auction.
Yeah, I could still run ads in the paper or whatever.
Absolutely could.
Because I'm not seeing it in there. I thought at one point I saw where it said GOV.
Right here.
Yeah, right in the section four.
Oh, duh.
Right there in section four.
Because I've had a couple other companies contact me, and I don't know anything about them.
You know what we could do? This is just for 2018. This internet auction, if you're gonna sell things by internet auction, you're supposed to redo it each year because then you can designate. So if you want to do this for the rest of the year, and then we could investigate other people, and maybe we could list a few other people when we pass it in early 2019.
But by passing this, we're not eliminating private treaty?
If by that you mean private sale, no. This is...
He's got back on the...
Yeah, sale.
That part's still got my advertising.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm good.
Need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash 14, second reading by caption only, a resolution to assess streetlight mileage. Resolution 2018 dash 15, second reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, directing the DeFitz County Auditor to assess and enter delinquent water and sewer bills on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A. Resolution 2018 dash 16, second reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, directing the DeFitz County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent cost of weed and grass mowing on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A. Resolution 2018 dash 17, a resolution, or second reading by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the DeFitz County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2019. Resolution 2018 dash 18, a second reading by caption only, a resolution recognizing and promoting the importance of the groundwater aquifer in opposition to drilling for or private distribution of the groundwater from the Michadoa Glacial Aquifer to locations out of the designated aquifer.
Doesn't this need done right away? I mean, aren't they getting ready to go ahead with it?
There's a lot of stuff on Facebook. Now, I don't follow Facebook, but my understanding is the Commissioners of Williams County is for it. But the city of Bryan is against it, and everybody else is against it. But we're the only one of two councils that has done that, so I don't think there's a big hurry.
Sounds like...
They're definitely meeting, they're definitely holding meetings about it.
Yeah.
The boys are pioneers, pushing hard.
There's, yeah, yes.
Resolution 2018 dash 19, a first reading by caption only, a resolution strongly urging the Ohio Governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to invest the state budget surplus in municipalities. Resolution 2018 dash 20, first reading by caption only, a resolution for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Bryan Excavating LLC for the Chicago Avenue Waterline Project and declaring an emergency.
Yes, and I will say on that one, since it's OPWCE, I'd like to get that passed tonight so I can get paperwork to them.
I move to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Second, third readings, Resolution 2018 dash 20 by caption only, a resolution for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Bryan Excavating LLC for the Chicago Avenue Waterline Project and declaring an emergency.
So move.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash 21, a first reading by caption only, a resolution establishing a new pay rate for the village administrator for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
I salute. Oh, yeah, suspend the rules and...
Second.
Roll call.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Second, third reading, Resolution 2018 dash 21, a resolution establishing a new pay rate for the village administrator for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Roll call.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Barth.
Yes.
And then ordinance 2018 dash 10, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance creating a new assistant administrator position for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. That was the title that was given to the job description for what Mike Bailey's gonna be doing.
Did the personnel committee see the job description?
Don't do this again. In a nutshell, if you take the grade 2 laborer combined with zoning, that was the job description I came up with. I gave it to Cheryl the day after the last.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Baker.
Yep.
Jones.
Yes.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
I want to see it.
Yes.
Second, third readings, ordinance 2018 dash 10 by caption only, an ordinance creating a new assistant administrator position for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bridgeway.
Yes.
And then the other thing is we're gonna need what we're done to do, executive session, or maybe a couple topics of possible litigation and employment matter.
Thank you. One of the department heads, doesn't look like anyone's here for the police department, so we'll go on to Fire Chief Kramer.
Another thing for fire, another thing for...
All right. Are you here representing the park? Do you have anything you'd like to...
No, I think we're covered in.
All right, thanks for telling stuff.
Thanks, Deb.
All right, well, we'll go on to fiscal officer's report.
Mine's short, too. I have the month, the date, year, to date cash report. And I also put in the member alert from the OML, and it's about the budget surplus. We would like our money back, and he has other ideas for it.
Cheryl, is there anything that you would particularly like to point out in the cash statement? That anybody needs to be particularly aware of?
General.
Yeah, you can start with the general fund. And you can notice we still have four months to go. And I don't know how we're gonna pay the PD. You can't really see it on here because it's all with...
They have to let them go.
All the general fund. I'm gonna have to do some layoffs because it's pretty grim.
I did just happen to remember that we had an RLF meeting last week to consider a request, but we did not have enough information to make a decision about that. So another meeting will follow, and I guess we'll have some minutes for you then on that.
It's gonna be Wednesday at 5:30.
So we will go on to the mayor's report. First of all, I'd like to take a minute to wish our village administrator a happy 41st wedding anniversary today. Congratulations to Kent and Hannah.
Show up at council meeting.
And he's here with us.
Love's funny, isn't it?
Gonna be trouble when he gets home. She's at the fair.
We, the Huber, the Huber guys, all those volunteers that work so hard down there, dropped off a flyer to me today that Meet the Cops is gonna take place at the Huber, September 20, 9 to 11, coffee and donuts provided by the Huber Boys. So Meet the Cops, September 20. That is Monday. Oh, no, that's a, that's a Thursday? Thursday morning? That's probably the donut day that they're delivering from. 9/11, the 20th. Go to the Huber and meet the cops. And then I'd like to thank the committee that worked this spring to put together the summer concert series that we had in the community on the Huber side porch. And I'd like to thank the bands and the musicians that played. It was, I considered a real success. We had nice crowds every night. And I look forward to that continuing each year. And I think that the musicians really enjoyed it also, as did the residents. And people came from other communities. It was interesting to talk to them also. So thank you to everyone that made that a success. And thank you to the Huber for allowing us to use their side porch and providing water and stuff to the people on those hot days. So then I would also like to congratulate Bill Zimmerman on his 90th birthday that he just celebrated. Bill's a great person to have in our community, and a hard worker, and a veteran, and just a great guy. And let's see, there's gonna be a pickleball clinic this Thursday down at the park.[1732.83] And let's see, there's gonna be a pickleball clinic this Thursday down at the park. At 8:30 in the morning, it starts, but sign up begins at 8:00 AM. And we have a couple guys from Defiance coming to teach people how to play pickleball. And we have free paddles, pickleball paddles, to the first 15 people that sign up and take the...participate in the clinic, thanks to the Eagles auxiliary. Thank you very much. And let's see, Keith Countryman called me today asking if the council would consider putting in some type of a pedestrian crosswalk, maybe with a push button, out where Nancy Slattery used to live, or maybe near the Lutheran church, where the kids that are on the opposite side of the road from the school have a place to push a button and safely cross the road. So, I am going to give that matter to the Street Light and Property and Sidewalk Committee, which is Ron Beverly, Sheila Baker, and Larry Ridgeway. I don't know if there are currently any...if there's still safe routes to school grants available to apply for for something like that or not. But I told Keith that we would discuss it.
Most definitely. I remember there were several of those when we had that survey done, and they are quite expensive.
Right.
Quite expensive.
Are then your lights, though, or anything?
No.
Is it out in the middle of the state route? You have them?
Well, it's not a state route anymore. It's on Center Street.
That'd scare me more than not having one, personally. People aren't gonna be paying attention to the crossing.
They light up like crazy.
Somebody don't pay attention when they're at the brakes and...
Yeah.
You're retired, Ron. You can fly them.
Crossing guard?
Yeah. So, going on then, Mike Bailey and Sheila Bassett and I went out and looked at the sidewalks in the downtown business district because there is a company that's willing to come to Hicksville to grind down the bad spots that we have in the downtown sidewalks. And they gave us a quote, and Sheila has that, I believe. But also, we wanted...if we're gonna bring them here to do that, we wanted to give the residents an opportunity to get on a list, to grind down any high spots they might have in their sidewalks at their cost. But if you wanna see an example of what they can do, in front of the village administrator's office, this company had come and did a demonstration for Mike Bailey to show him how...that they could ground down a sidewalk that was heaved up, you know, somewhat, rather than replace the whole sidewalk at a higher cost. So, if you are interested in getting on that list to have that work done at your residence and at your cost when they come to do ours, if we go that way, just call the zoning office, and that's 542-0115, and leave your name and address and telephone number for Mike Bailey, and he can add you to a list. That's 419-542-0115. If you're interested in getting on a list to have your sidewalk, the edge of your sidewalk ground down also, so it would be level.
Are you gonna have a timeframe on that, Mayor? So many...so much time to get it for people to call in before we have them come over here and do the work?
Well, we don't have a date for them to come and do the work yet, so I would just say call us in the next couple weeks. And it'd be at least that long before they get to Hicksville, I imagine. And I'll keep announcing it as long as the opportunity, I guess, arises.
Is everybody good with that going on?
I don't even think Larry's aware of it, are you?
Cost for these locations on the paperwork that Sheila gave me, there's 80 linear feet total on all the different locations.
It's just downtown.
And it's $1,539.84. Granted, it is a Band-Aid. After they come in and saw cut...they saw cut a four...a four-inch slab that's bucked up two inches. Now, you've got two inches, and that's gonna deteriorate. So, you're getting a year, maybe two years, of good service for the...let's just call it 1550. I know when I spoke with you, Sheila, I was thinking...I was thinking this price was gonna be a lot higher. And if they can do that for that kind of number and do the locations you've got, I would like to make a motion, if it's necessary, to tell Kent to get it done.
Well, if you invited the public, now you're gonna have to wait since...
Well, and that's why I asked Diane if there was a timeframe. But there might also be a waiting list, you know. If Kent can get ahold of them and find out, hey, you know, when could you be here? And he says, well, I can't be here in four weeks. Then Diane's got her...Mike's got her...
It's just a temporary fix, and I never really paid that much attention. There's a lot of work up there.
What kind of cost are you talking about? So, people know. We'll say you have one section needs cranked.
They don't have a breakdown?
Kent, Mike told us, was it like...
$80 for the piece they done out front of the...
And that was a four-foot wide sidewalk, wasn't it?
Okay, so people have an idea.
And that was the whole...the whole edge of it, not just a section like this.
Yeah, I think he said that was a four-foot wide sidewalk for $80.
Thirty-seven...thirty-seven and a half dollars per linear foot, 41 linear feet total, total cost. About $37.34 linear foot.
But a lot of them uptown are just small sections, I felt, you know, not near as big as what they did in front of them.
People...
Yeah, it's a safety. It's definitely a safety.
Well, people have an idea what it's gonna cost, if it's gonna be $200. But $80, that's...
I would just say call the zoning inspector's office as soon as possible if you're interested in getting your personal sidewalk ground at your expense. We'll try to keep you updated on the village's website. Dawn keeps it pretty updated, so maybe she can, you know, keep the public informed on thevillageofhicksville.com website. So...
I think if we're gonna do it, we need to stay on this and get it done.
Well, I know Mike is not...he told us that he's not pursuing residential sidewalks right now until we get our own taken care of, which makes sense. We need to get our own taken care of downtown.
Well, I think we can do both at the same time. We're quite articulate.
All right.
It's been a factor with residents. If they have, like, one section that needed repair to hire a company to come in and just drop cement in that one section, that's hard for them to do unless it's more advantageous to do a whole run. I mean...
Well, that's where I talked months and months ago about getting a contractor to go in and...
I agree with that.
Because he's, you know, he's got 50 different four-foot squares. He's gonna do it a whole lot cheaper than the guy that has to pay less than the load for the cement to get there for him, or he's gonna pay $108 for the quarter yard.
That's how we did it in the past.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, that's all I have. So, I believe if someone wanted to go into executive session...
I'll let we go into executive.
Did you have anything for council? Are you representing the police chief?
I am. The only thing we have is officer man or probation stuff. That's all we have.
Well, I guess, you know, I would like to see...I guess I wanna talk to the chief about it, and then he could bring it up at the next meeting. Okay?
You still on probation?
Yeah.
You?
No. Have you heard back from the state on any more about paving at Work Drive and Main? We've talked about that a couple times, but I don't know if we ever...
It's been put off till 2022.
Ooh, wow.
And I'll give you a reader's digest version. The village should have gotten a letter in either January or February explaining that. But I only recently found out that it's been pushed back to 2022.
We did get it.
Yeah, it's been nice.
But there was no action for us to take on it.
Well, no, but it would've spelled out what was getting done or not getting done.
Have you talked to...
That isn't...
Have you talked to Morgan? When's he gonna come fix that intersection?
I keep waiting to hear.
He told me the week of the ninth of...
And then he was waiting to see what ODAT was doing, which I thought had nothing to do with anything. So, as soon as I found out about things getting put off, I let him know that there's no...there's not gonna be any conflict with him doing as far as adding extra traffic woes anywhere. But I have not heard back yet from...
These are the app for...
They still gotta do that, and one man was...
That's the original.
Kent, with the information that we got from Troy and our conversations we've had, has anybody notified the proper people to...about the rock, a wall on West High Street that needs repairing? You know, I think got Troy's opinion on who's responsible? Has anybody followed through with that besides...you know, I talked to the priest at Catholic Church and told him it was their responsibility to take care of it, as Troy told me. And we would only need to take action if they didn't take care of it, and then we would do it and assess their property taxes. So, he knows that, but has anybody followed up with it?
None. They're gonna be the next door neighbor.
We might as well keep moving on that, I think.
Yeah, our biggest issue is we gotta keep the right of way from obstruction or danger. So, rocks are falling out, and people are hitting them or something like that. That's where our problem comes in. That's pretty common.
Anything else we need to discuss before we go into executive session?
I got one thing. How they go about replacing the bulbs on the streetlights? Because one Catholic church has been out forever. Dave Batterhill said he wanted to cross from his street, streetlights out. I don't know.
That's on my...not that particular light.
Yeah.
One of these days, I'm either gonna come in super-duper early or come in super-duper late and drive.
I have asked a police chief to have the police officers report lights like that being out.
I know there's a bunch on Defiance Avenue. I noticed the other night.
There you go.
It's once I find out about them, yeah, I...
Right, okay. I was wondering, 'cause it hasn't been out for a while.
I know there's probably a bunch out. I just haven't...
All right.
So, if you give me addresses and pole numbers, I'll send them in a whole list. I think there's at least four or five out of Defiance Avenue. I'll have to store it even.
Yeah, we're paying for it. They burn it out.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions or anything to discuss before we go into executive session?
Nope.
All righty.
I already made a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please. Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yep.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.